Did by SUB electric and that's not. By sub electric and that's not. The bill. Prices are driven, well, I'm sure Tamara could speak to it better than I can, but. Prices are driven well, I'm sure Tamara could speak to it better than I can, but.
And I'm very happy to see it. It's, it's nice to have things very clear. So good work. Thank you. And I'm very happy to see it. It's nice to have things very clear. So good work. Thank you.
Corey. Corey.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for this. Yes, it is. And I um, Thank you. And thank you for this. Yes, it is. And I I have a question, but I also just want to say something in a public meeting. I want to encourage if folks are interested. I have a question, but I also just want to say something in a public meeting. I want to encourage if folks are interested. There is a section in there that tells you exactly what that maintenance is because I know when I was first looking at, I'm like, well, what is just ordinary maintenance? There is a section in there that tells you exactly what that maintenance is because I know when I was first looking at, I'm like, well, what is just ordinary maintenance? And what does that look like? And so it's spelled out here. So folks are watching and they're like, what, what is ordinary maintenance? What is it? And what does that look like? And so it's spelled out in here. So if folks are watching and they're like, what, what is ordinary maintenance? What is it? And my question is really about the, in the like article six where there's the additional services. And my question is really about the in the like article six where there's the additional services. And I think it's just because this is somewhat fresh. And I think it's just because this is somewhat fresh. Um, I was reading the part about like the emergency work and the emergency conditions. Um, I was reading the part about like the emergency work and the emergency conditions. And just curious as to um, as to how do I want to say it, like And just curious as to um, as to how do I want to say it like only so much of that can probably be spelled out in the SOP, right? Only you can only say we're going to do this thing. only so much of that can probably be spelled out in the SOP, right? Only you can only say we're going to do this thing. So I'm just curious as to to how um, we sort of set that up for success that during an emergency, So I'm just curious as to, to how um, we sort of set that up for success, that during an emergency, who's going to take care of things, how that's going to happen, how it's going to be built to the city. I'm assuming you've all worked it out. who's going to take care of things, how that's going to happen, how it's going to be built to the city. I'm assuming you've all worked it out. But we're just making a little space for us to say, yes, we've figured this out. But we're just making a little space for us to say, yes, we've figured this out. We've learned from past things and we think we've got a solid, a solid thing moving forward. We've learned from past things and we think we've got a solid, a solid thing moving forward. Does that make sense in a very messy way? Does that make sense in a very messy way?
Obviously, the ice storm that occurred is probably still fresh in everyone's minds. Um, Obviously, the ice storm that occurred is probably still fresh in everyone's minds. We, we were still in the process of drafting this when that occurred. we, we were still in the process of drafting this when that occurred. And I, I think we definitely had an opportunity there to kind of reflect back and say, well, what happened? How did we do it? And what can we do better? And I, I think we definitely had an opportunity there to kind of reflect back and say, well, what happened? How did we do it? And what can we do better? Um, the SOP is not 100% finalized, so I, I can't really speak to the individual points of it. Um, the SOP is not 100% finalized, so I, I can't really speak to the individual points of it. But what I will say is that uh, we, you can see here in, in the emergency response section But what I will say is that uh, we, you can see here in, in the emergency response section that um, SUB is the primary responder to restoring power to the area at large, right? that um, SUB is the primary responder to restoring power to the area at large, right? The street lighting is at that point, sort of an incidental part of the system. The street lighting is at that point, sort of an incidental part of the system. And the priorities are power to businesses and homes. And the priorities are power to businesses and homes. And they have, they agreed through the IGA that they will respond and make safe the lighting system because many of those lights have And they have, they agreed through the IGA that they will respond and make safe the lighting system because many of those lights have power lines that are strung overhead and those need to be made safe. power lines that are strung overhead and those need to be made safe. Uh, SUB did that during the ice storm and they will, they continue, will continue to do that. Uh, SUB did that during the ice storm and they will, they continue, will continue to do that. Uh, I'm not sure if that. Uh, I'm not sure if that.
Yes. Can I just say a little follow up statement? Yeah, I really appreciate that because I know that that was Yes. Can I just say a little follow up statement? Yeah, I really appreciate that because I know that that was um, after the ice storm, the, the conversations were like, we're, we're going to learn from this. We're going to try to, we're going to see where we can make improvements. um, after the ice storm, the, the conversations were like, we're, we're going to learn from this. We're going to try to, we're going to see where we can make improvements. And just the fact that this is coming together at the same time is a perfect opportunity for us to like, And just the fact that this is coming together at the same time is a perfect opportunity for us to like, what's our muscles and how we do that. So I just, I just wanted to have the conversation out loud and, and hear your perspective on it. what's our muscles and how we do that. So I just, I just wanted to have the conversation out loud and, and hear your perspective on it. So I appreciate it. And I appreciate, like you said, that, you know, we have this opportunity to continue to improve it. Thank you. So I appreciate it. And I appreciate, like you said, that, you know, we have this opportunity to continue to improve it. Thank you.
Just really quick, do we, I, I didn't see in here where there's any like specific contact Just really quick, do we, I, I didn't see in here where there's any like specific contact people between SUB and the city except for Nancy and Jeff. And so I'm wondering people between SUB and the city except for uh, Nancy and Jeff. And so I'm wondering as it maybe relates to an emergency situation or something going on with the lights, is there as it maybe relates to an emergency situation or something going on with the lights, is there specific contact people that we have between SUB and us that. specific contact people that we have between SUB and us that.
That information is contained within SOP and the reason it's not in here is because those names can change. That information is contained within SOP and the reason it's not in here is because those names can change.
Okay, good. But we do have like specifically this person is going to talk to this person. Okay, good. But we do have like specifically this person is going to talk to this person.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Have each other's cell phone numbers and okay, good. Thank you. That's all I wanted. Have each other's cell phone numbers and okay, good. Thank you. That's all I wanted.
Right. Anybody else? Right. Anybody else?
All right. Um, yeah, it look, it, it looks good to me. Uh, one of the things I think All right. Um, yeah, it look, it, it looks good to me. Uh, one of the things I think when I saw the 2003 IGA, it does not seem that long ago, but that is almost 20 years ago. when I saw the 2003 IGA, it does not seem that long ago, but that is almost 20 years ago. And this, and this is a, and this is a good example of we're just clarifying and updating roles allows our staffs to work more seamlessly together. And this, and this is a, and this is a good example of we're just clarifying and updating roles allows our staffs to work more seamlessly together. And I think that's an important message for everybody to hear and an important message for you guys to take when you go in front of the sub board. And I think that's an important message for everybody to hear and an important message for you guys to take when you go in front of the sub board.
Great. Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have one final thing, uh, which is to say Tamara is going to be retiring from SUB in July. I have one final thing, uh, which is to say Tamara is going to be retiring from SUB in July. And how many years? And how many years? 24. Uh, we, we have been working on this IGA, whether you guys have known about it or not. 24. Uh, we, we have been working on this IGA, whether you guys have known about it or not. We've been working on this for several years now and uh, we are hopefully excited to see it getting approved. We've been working on this for several years now and uh, we are hopefully excited to see it getting approved. And so we can frame a certificate for you, you know, copy of it for as a retirement gift. And so we can frame a certificate for you, you know, copy of it for as a retirement gift.
Um, does she have to have it done before she can retire? Um, does she have to have it done before she can retire?
I'll mail her a copy. I'll mail her a copy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, go ahead, Corey. Well, go ahead, Corey.
I was just gonna add, I feel like this is a perfect example of like a public service to the max. I was just gonna add, I feel like this is a perfect example of like a public service to the max. Like this is your life's work is going to be this IGA. So thank you. Like this is your life's work is going to be this IGA. So thank you.
All right. Before we, before we wrap up, um, let's just check with our assistant city attorney. Christina, did you have anything else you needed to add? All right. Before we, before we wrap up, um, let's just check with our assistant city attorney. Christina, did you have anything else you needed to add?
Christina was giving us a heads up about an audio issue that we took care of. Christina was giving us a heads up about an audio issue that we took care of.
Oh, outstanding. It's a full service legal advice we got tonight. Oh, outstanding. It's a full service legal advice we got tonight. All right, then we are good. I am going to adjourn the work session and we will be back on the same link in 10 more minutes for the regular session. Thank you, everybody. All right, then we are good. I am going to adjourn the work session and we will be back on the same link in 10 more minutes for the regular session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
We just restarted recording.
I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with a roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Council Weber.
Here.
Council Mo.
Here.
Council Radley.
Here.
Council Blackwell.
Here.
Council Doyle.
Here.
And Council Pictionary.
Here, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. There are two designated times for public testimony this evening under business from the audience. If you're attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the city recorder's desk in the council chambers and turn them into the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak with either of these times, please put the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is as follows. Anyone in the council chamber first and then anyone who has raised their virtual hand. First item, please.
First item is the consent calendar.
To approve the consent counter.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Radley.
Yes.
Council Blackwell.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
Aye.
And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have four public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex approximately 2.44 acres of industrial property in Glenwood located at 3331 Franklin Boulevard. That's map seventeen dash zero three dash three four dash three three tax lot 100. This is just a first reading and Andy Limbert is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just going to have a PowerPoint slides brought up just for context for the property that's requesting annexation in Glenwood. It's on the south side of Franklin Boulevard and it adjoins the University Motor Pool, which is a prominent fixture along Glenwood Boulevard. This 2.4 acre property was previously used for auto parts retail. And the request for annexation is to connect to city sanitary sewer. There is a sewer line that runs along the western boundary of this property. And it is operated by the Metropolitan Waste Water Management Commission. The applicant previously obtained a plumbing permit to install a sewer lateral about 20 years ago to the property. Was not connected pending annexation. And so the applicant is now requesting the annexation to complete the connection of plumbing to allow for city sanitary sewer to be provided to this property. It would also facilitate redevelopment of the property sometime in the future under the Glenwood office mixed use zoning. This afternoon, staff had a request from the applicant that they had some questions about the provisions of the annexation agreement. And there wasn't sufficient time to get those resolved before the meeting this evening. So staff is requesting that the item be continued, the public hearing be continued in the record held open to June 17th. And that allowed time for the applicant and their representatives and staff to iron out any questions pertaining to the annexation agreement and bring back that agreement with the packet for adoption at the next meeting on June 17th. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Remember we have three, we have three separate public hearings tonight, so be sure to watch out. I know a lot of you are here for the one on Fessin. Is there anybody, I do not have any cards for this item. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to this item? Neil, is there anybody online?
No hands for this item.
Okay. Then we're going to continue the public hearing. We're, we're going to continue the public hearing to the city council regular session on June 17th, 2024. Unless there's any other questions from the council. All right, I think we're ready for the next item.
Mayor, the next item is your second public hearing. It's annexation of property between seven five two seven and seven six five five Thurston Road. Map and tax lot seventeen dash zero two dash three five dash zero zero dash zero three two zero zero and three six zero three. And approximately 1,175 feet of Thurston Road right away. Again, this is a first reading and Andy Limbert is here for this item.
Thank you. Can you just advance to the second slide? Please, thank you. This will provide a better context to the property that's being requested for annexation. So this property is located in the Thurston neighborhood. It abuts Thurston Road along the northeast boundary. And it is between Bobarts Park on the east and Thurston Elementary School on the west. The zoning for this property is R1 residential. And the request for annexation is to facilitate future residential development of the property. The county had requested that a segment of Thurston Road be annexed concurrently with this property to facilitate urban improvements to this, this road as well as future jurisdictional transfer. And that's the reason for this segment of Thurston Road being annexed, the request. It is likely also that some portions of Thurston Road will be required for extension of public utilities to serve this site. And so providing the annexation will allow for the city to be the issuing authority for permits along Thurston Road. This request for annexation, staff is also recommending to continue the public hearing to June 17th. There has been discussions between the applicant and city staff regarding the annexation agreement. Some refinements and amendments to the annexation agreement were required and those are still pending. And so in order to facilitate a completed annexation agreement that can be brought to council for their review. Staff is requesting this be, matter be continued to June 17th. I did have a couple of phone calls regarding this, just asking about the nature of the annexation, but there wasn't any testimony that had been submitted into the record at this time.
Are there any questions from the council? Joe.
Just a quick question, Andy, do you, is, is this creating a county island?
I guess it could be, although the property on both sides is annexed. So it's actually kind of reducing the size of an existing island. Because there would be four intervening properties kind of in the north portion between immediately east of Thurston Elementary. And this property's kind of peninsula extension out to Thurston Road. Previously, this was an unincorporated kind of block. And so this would reduce that block and kind of split it actually into two because there's properties in the northeast along Thurston Road that are not annexed. And then properties are kind of almost wrapped around by the Thurston Road annexation that's proposed that also would remain. So it's, I guess essentially splitting into two remaining unincorporated pieces.
It's just difficult to see where the actual city limits is. I know it's labeled on the west border behind Thurston Elementary and it's labeled on the south.
It runs pretty much around the outer boundary of this property with the exception of a portion that runs north. In this, in a red line that is just one property east of Thurston Elementary. So that, that property is actually annexed a couple of years ago in anticipation of development. So this is, I guess, an adjoining property that's also seeking annexation.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I have one card and it's Sue Hartman, it looks like. You come. Come on up. Okay, are one of you asking to testify?
My daughter.
I'll testify, mom, go ahead and sit down. Note the others. We were wondering about.
Wait, could you state your?
Sorry, I'm Brandy, I'm her daughter, I also live with her, we're out in Thurston area. We were wondering about.
Okay, Brandy, we gotta get the timer up, we gotta get a little bit.
You said faster things.
Hey, just give me one, again, one more second.
Okay. So we were.
You are on.
We were wondering, what we, we were reading online is that they're wanting to put a lot of houses out in this area is what we're hearing about apartments and things. And we're wondering about traffic on Thurston Road, about how that's going to affect people who already live out there. And what kind of infrastructure is going to be put to mediate the traffic out there? Because with all the kids and all the traffic that we already have, especially because it looks like that property is going to have maybe one or one way in and out from what I can tell. It, we are a little worried about that. And because we have enough traffic on Thurston Road as it is, that speeds a great deal. There's multiple accidents that happen out there. How do we keep the kids safe? How do we keep traffic down from being crazy? And is there, what the plans are for that area? And how do we get more access to that? Because as people that live out there, I actually only heard about that on Facebook. I didn't actually get any information. So it would be kind of nice to have that information more. I think a lot of people in Thurston like to know who live out that area. So that's kind of my questions.
All right, thank you. We're not going to answer them right now, we're going to go through all, all the hearing and we'll, we'll work through them.
Okay, thank you. Mama, no, 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 you're not on tape.
Oh, I knew down on that one.
You've got another minute.
Oh, you're timing me, eh?
Dude.
Wow.
You wanna.
Okay. Okay, Reader Digest version, eh? Okay.
One second, one second, hang on. We gotta reset the timer if you're going to testify separately. And then you gotta state your name for the record.
It's a game show.
It's gonna feel like, we're gonna get really good at this by the time the night's over.
Wow.
All right, could you state your name for the record and then go ahead?
Okay, so I've been a, living out at Thurston in my own home for about 12 years.
One second, you gotta state your name and your location in the city for the record and then go ahead.
My name is Sue Hartman. I live at six seven seven five D Street in Springfield, have for almost good 12 years or more. And I was raised and born in Eugene and moved to Springfield when I was about 20 something, so. So my daughter heard about them putting apartments and housing out there by Rough Park. We were kind of concerned because number one, we really like it out at Thurston. We like to keep it country and not mobile apartments and all, you know. And it is going to cause a lot of traffic and changes. And number one, I wonder why the public, because everybody in our neighborhood weren't informed of this. And being a homeowner, I like to know what's going on around me, so I have a say so. So that's one of my biggest questions was how, how come we weren't told? And everybody we talked to, nobody knew about it. Even the lady that works for Forge or Springfield, or was it Springfield Brandy, probably? Yeah, the school district, she didn't know nothing about it and she was like, what? And my daughter told her, said, and she went, well, what's going on here? They might need schools and this is going to change things. And why weren't the public informed? And I find this in Springfield, this has been happening more and more and I'm not liking this. So I'd like to know why and how come I wasn't informed? And you know, I, and I want to know, informed because a lot of people don't take the paper anymore. They listen to the news maybe on TV, so, and why weren't we given a thing? Like notified through the mail then of people that, you know, live there. So nobody knows about what you guys are doing and that makes me real, you know, wondering what is happening? And why weren't we informed? And then putting apartments? We have enough apartments and there's enough land in Springfield that are vacant lots. Why can't you put up more apartments in town? You know, maybe we might consider houses, nice homes for people in those areas. But I can't see putting it in a whole bunch of apartments and a whole bunch of places. As my daughter said, because our roads aren't that wide, number one, and can't always take that many people. And I don't like when you guys push the boundaries out more and more when we have land in town that can be used for that. You know? Because there's a lot of vacant lots when I drive around, you know? And I know about 11th and Main, there's a nice big lot there that could have apartments.
All right, thank you so much.
That's it?
That is it, that is three minutes.
Wow. Okay. And that's another thing I don't agree with. I think you guys should be giving people more time to talk.
We got plenty of people.
Voted for you and I vote, and I like you telling things, letting us know about things, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. But it's my concern.
Anybody online? Thought I saw somebody.
We do. One person with their hand raised, Michael Sherman. Michael, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
And Michael, if this is for the Thurston, the annexation, hoping for you.
I got one question.
No, thank you, we're done answering questions. Thank you, that's it, thank you. Thank you, we're moving on to the next part of this, the hearing. Michael Sherman, please.
Hello, yes, thank you for giving me three minutes to talk. My wife and I just moved into the neighborhood.
Michael, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me? Hello?
Michael?
I should be unmuted, can you hear me? Oh.
Michael, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello? Join as panelist.
Michael, try to unmute your microphone one more time.
Yeah, unable to start video, hello, can you hear me? I'm not sure if it's letting me join. Oh, wow. Um, hello, can you hear me?
Michael?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did, when he signed up, did we get an email for him?
We should have an email so we can follow up with him.
Yeah, Michael, the hearings for this is going to get continued, so there'll be another opportunity to testify or we can take your testimony by, by email. So somebody from the city is going to reach out to you and make sure you have that information. Do we have any other body raising their hand?
Hello, can you hear me now? Hello?
No one else raising their hand, wait, see if we can do one more thing to.
Okay.
Hello, hello?
Okay.
Can you hear me now? No?
Michael, just one moment, one moment.
Okay, it says the host is not allowing me to share my video. Says the host has stopped it, I'm not sure. It says that the audio is coming through, I'm not sure if it's something on your end or not. But I could follow up after as well.
We're going to have to hit his email.
Okay, so then we're going to continue. We're, this is the, we're going to continue the public hearing to the city council regular meeting on June 17th, 2024. Any other questions for council about Thurston before we go to the next item? All right, next item, please.
Next item is your annexation number three, or public hearing number three, an annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex 2.34 acres of residential property located at map seventeen dash zero three dash two two dash one three tax lot two zero eight zero one. And map seventeen dash zero three dash two two dash one two tax lot. tax lot 02100 and concurrently annexed as a segment of Game Farm Road and Pheasant Boulevard. This is just a first reading and Tom Severs is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I'm Tom Severs, Senior Planner with the Current Planning Section. Tonight, the council is requested to consider an ordinance to annex an approximately 2.34 acre area that includes two tax lots in Northwest Springfield along with two segments of public right of way. I also wanted to note that staff received written comments late last Friday over the weekend and this morning from four area residents as well as a handful of phone calls. Those comments were printed and should be in front of you now. The proposed annexation area is highlighted in yellow. Of the two tax lots, the first is addressed as 3333 Pheasant Boulevard at the north end of the annexation area. And the second being the long vacant linear lot, which is formerly a Southern Pacific Railroad right of way. The applicant is the property owner and they have requested annexation to receive city services to facilitate a future residential subdivision. Staff also requests to include unannexed segments of Pheasant Boulevard and Game Farm Road as you see outlined here. Annexation of the street segments will not constitute a jurisdictional transfer and will remain the responsibility of the county. The site is zoned R1 low-density residential with the urbanizable fringe UF10 overlay. As you can see, it is contiguous to the city limits immediately to the north. If annexation is approved, no other zoning changes are requested except for the removal of the UF10 overlay. With annexation, the subject property will be removed from special districts such as the UF10 overlay depicted here and service areas such as the Rainbow Water District. No other changes will occur with this application. There are four approval criteria for annexations in the Springfield Development Code, which were fully analyzed in the staff report and summarized as follows. Criterion A, within the UGB and contiguous to the city limits. As previously stated, the subject property is contiguous to the city limits along its northern boundary. The subject territory is within the city's urban growth boundary and is currently covered by the urbanizable fringe overlay. Criterion B, consistent with the policies of the metro plan. Policies 27, 29, 33, 34, and 35 of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan's Urbanization Element are met through this application as the annexed land will be fully within the Springfield Urban Service Area. Criterion C, within boundary for a minimum level of key urban facilities. Policies 29, 31, and 32 of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan's Urbanization Element are met through this application as well. If annexation is approved, the subject territory can easily obtain key facilities and services from the Game Farm Road right of way. Again, these facilities and services will include sanitary sewer connection, sub-water and electric service, fire protection services from the Eugene Springfield Fire Department, and police services from Springfield Police. The subject site is currently within the Willamette Lane Park and Recreation District. Lastly, Criterion D is the annexation agreement. An annexation agreement has been prepared by staff and is ready to be signed by the applicant. The agreement covers obligations for the applicant and for the city, including any financial responsibilities. The agreement includes details on further connection to key urban facilities and services and withdrawal from special service districts. If the annexation is approved by city council at the second reading on June 17th, then the agreement will be ready for execution by the city manager and it would be then recorded with Lane County. Because all applicable annexation criteria have been met and the annexation will help facilitate bringing this property and a budding right of way into the city limits, city staff recommends that this application be considered for approval by council. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions that you have.
Victoria.
Just a couple of quick questions. One, was there an annexation notice sent out to people?
Yes, there absolutely was.
And how do you, what's the area in which you do that?
300 feet from the property lines. In this case, it would be the full extent of this property, including tax lot or the address tax lot 3333 Pheasant and then the extent of the vacant lot.
And so that happens with every annexation?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And then the second thing is we are here today to talk about the annexation of that property. There is no development in front of us. We're not looking at anything that has to do with development. We're talking about just the annexation today.
That is absolutely correct, Counsel.
Thank you.
Michelle.
So I did drive by this property today just to kind of get a visual representation. And I do have some concerns about what type of a development would go into this. It's a really long strip. To me, it doesn't look like it's conducive to a lot of housing. And I'm hearing the number 20 or what, you know, different numbers. So I just, I understand we're just talking about annexation today and not the development, but I just want to make sure that we're really, really thoughtful. If we go down that path at some future point, we're really, really thoughtful about those, those types of concerns.
Absolutely, yes. Initial concepts that I've seen so far were showing duplex units, 10 to 14 units, so individual units, that would be possibly 20 to 28. And if there is a chance, I do believe the applicant's representative is here tonight from the Satri Group to speak to that as well if needed.
All right, other questions? Joe?
Of those units, would two, excuse me, would two-story units be permitted in this? Of those units, would those, any of those units be permitted to be two-story in height?
Yes, sir. So the R1 zone allows up to 35 feet in height. There are some considerations there due to the tightness of that linear lot and the power lines that go through that property. The applicant, I believe, has been in talks with Sub Electric on that matter and they have worked out in their concepts how to accommodate those power lines and things of that matter.
So I know it's come back, or it's come up before in the past and back history in regards to the, we worked on some code and when it came to visual areas in which the higher homes or higher places of living can view. And I don't recall exactly, I know that was addressed, but I don't recall exactly how it was addressed, but it's not the form today to do that. But I do want to let you know that I'm very concerned about that part of the posed development and so I would look forward to seeing more information regarding that and to help make sure that, that we don't, there's something that's not created there that we can prevent before it's created.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right. And we are gonna get ready for the public hearing. Given the size of how many cards that I have, I'm gonna call people up two at a time so that we can, you know, switch between two microphones. The couple of asks that I do have is we have a lot of cards, so if you can do anything you can to sort of streamline the information, that would be really helpful. We're not gonna respond to questions as we go. The deliberations of this happen at a later time, so right now, this is a public hearing. It is not normal for us to respond to any sort of questions. We'll do, try to do a little bit of follow-up as we go through the process. And there is no, we're not making any sort of decision tonight. So that's kind of, that's a, that's a critical piece. Last thing I do want to mention, I did, somebody did hand me two sets of written testimony. I have them sitting up here. I will give them to staff so that they can copy them and then put them in the packet for the next time when we actually conduct deliberations. Yeah, and, and you can, you can also get, get additional. Why don't you just go ahead and bring up the comment that you made before I open the public hearing?
Thank you. Just, just quickly, there's a few comments earlier and some people probably are here wondering about how to get information. They're not getting information, et cetera, et cetera. You've got to understand that we have a website. It's open to the public 24/7. Please go to the city of Springfield website. Go to, you can go to Development and Public Works tab and go to Public Hearings and it'll have all the content there, or you can go to the city of Springfield website. Go to the, on the homepage and click on the City Council Meetings tab and it will have everything that we get. So, so it's, it's, we try to get information out to everybody, but it's also on you to go seek it. That's very important. That's all I do too. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, no, we can't take it, we can't take any questions. Okay. So, A, I'm, I'm going to infer what the questions that you, that you guys have are so that we can, so that we can help. It's not normally a Q and A here, right? The whole point is we're gonna open a public hearing and give you guys a chance to talk. If we close the hearing tonight, which is normally what would happen, it would, you will not be able to give public testimony the next time. What we'll do is we'll get together as a group and then we'll, then we'll deliberate through all the material. Nancy?
Mayor, I would, if you, if we can just take a moment, I would like to ask that, maybe I was just talking to the city attorney to just to give a little overview about how public testimony works, because it can be a little confusing. We sit up here every week. We, we know how it works, but you all are here giving your time tonight, so I just wanna maybe have our city attorney talk about. It might feel weird when you're asking a question and the council doesn't respond. It's just, you know, there's, we, we're trying to get through a lot of material and it's part of a process.
Hi, Mayor Bridget.
Good evening. I'm the city attorney. My name is Mary Bridget Smith. Can you all hear me okay? So tonight, we're here for a public hearing for a proposed annexation. This public hearing is an opportunity for the public to speak with the council. They are the decision makers about the annexation. When you come up to testify, if you've given a card to the city recorder, you'll see the timer come up. You'll have three minutes to testify. You can ask questions during that time, but they may not answer your questions because we're in a hearing format. But the staff that is working on this project will keep track of those questions. And then that information will come back to the city council for a decision at the June 17th meeting. That's where they will deliberate to talk about this and make a decision and a vote. You will not have an opportunity to have, there's no public hearing at that June 17th meeting. So this is your opportunity to speak now. The people in the room who've given cards and who would like to speak will speak first. And then if there are people who are online, they also will have an opportunity to speak. When you come up to testify, you'll hear the mayor ask for your name and then where you live. You can either say what ward you live in or give your address. And then you'll be able to talk throughout the three minutes and then the next person will come up. And if that, I hope that answers questions and we'll start with the testimony and move forward from there.
All right. Thank you guys for coming. I know that this is a lot. If, if this is your first time giving public testimony, can you raise your hand? Yeah. We are not mean, we, we worked through this every week, so I appreciate your patience. So we're gonna try, we're gonna bring up two people at a time and then we'll go one and two and then we'll bring up the next, the next two people. We have quite a few cards, so it's gonna take a little bit. So the first two people I have, I'm just reading them in the order that I got, that they were turned in. So it's Janet Barker and Megan Watson. Okay, and you're gonna reach down and there's a mute button on the microphone and it will go green when it is active. We're gonna do Janet first. So name.
Oh, okay. My name is Janet Barker. I live at 3284 Pheasant Boulevard. I bought my home there in 1997. I'm speaking against the annexation and here are some of my reasons. Did you give them the letter? Okay. I'm very much opposed to Pheasant Boulevard being the point of egress for that development. I'm home all day long, most of the day, every day. We have so many walkers on our street. We have dog walkers. We have just regular walkers. We have elderly walkers. We have people in wheelchairs. We have babies in strollers. I don't know if I said dog walkers. That's me anyway. It's not safe. We don't have sidewalks and probably more than half of that street, we don't even, can't even get on the easement because vehicles are parked on the easement. I consider it very dangerous to have additional traffic there. We have UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, large semis that deliver furniture to people. Today, I was walking my dog facing the oncoming traffic and a school bus passed me in the oncoming lane. He, he was behind me because there was a truck parked and he couldn't get around it. We also have children that walk on that street. Second point, I'm concerned about the soil that they'll be digging in. Have there been any studies done on what's there? Are there noxious substances that are going to affect the neighbors health-wise? I think that's a legitimate concern. Also, I very much anticipate that our property values will go down. I, I know you're not talking about this tonight, but the proposed two-story buildings, 28 units possibly, that's a lot of traffic. And being tall like that, it's not very nice for the neighbors that have lived in those neighborhoods for all these years and they're mostly homeowners. I think I addressed other things in my letter. I wish I hadn't stopped so soon here. I still have time left. Thanks. That's it for now.
All right, thank you. We're gonna reset the timer and then we'll go with you, Megan.
Mayor, excuse me, while they're resetting the timer, I want to clarify one issue. Since this is a land use hearing for annexation, please give your address when you're testifying so you could be mailed the notice of decision.
All right, Megan.
Hello, my name is Megan Watson. I live at 3310 Oriole Street. I'm here today to ask the council to vote no to the annexation request of tax lots 20801 and 02100. Any other vote would cause irreparable harm to the surrounding neighborhoods and their residents. Annexation will cause an increase in noise, light, and traffic pollution. It will increase the risk to pedestrians on Pheasant, Mallard, Oriole, and Game Farm who already contend with road obstructions and distracted drivers due to a lack of sidewalks. Most importantly, allowing this annex will not solve or even improve the housing crisis in Lane County. As someone whose employment includes providing housing resources to our community, I can say definitively that squeezing two dozen overpriced apartments onto two acres will not change anything for low-income families. It will damage surrounding home values. It will decrease quality of life for myself and my neighbors and it will pave the way for more poorly planned developments just like it. What we need are affordable starter homes. We need easier paths to mortgages and we need to invest in programs that support first-time home buyers and enhance communities in ways that build equity. Please vote against this annexation request and keep my neighborhood intact. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two people I have are David Franklin and Jim Lemel. Uh, David, David Franklin. We're doing David Franklin first.
My name is David Franklin. I work, I live at 3206 Raleighwood Avenue. And I am against this annexation and I appreciate Michelle Weber driving by there today and taking a look at what, what kind of property that is. If you look at this room, that piece of property is about as wide as this room. And you wanna put a street in there, probably a sidewalk, and now build two-story houses. So the people on one side of the property and the other side of the property, you're gonna have two-story houses looking right in your pristine backyard. I love my backyard. I've been working on my backyard. And the other- And the other thing is, is it's going to affect property values, our property privacy. But one of the, one of the bigger things that, that I have on my mind right now is that was a railroad that was from probably the early 1900s, late 1800s to the seventies. And in the seventies, they shut it down, but in the eighties, they pulled up the rails and the ties. And the railroad didn't remove all the soil that was underneath there. They covered it up and now it's, it's entombed. So when, is, is there planning on any, any core to be, to be looked at in there? Because some of the things I've been reading about with the different things that the railroad uses, you notice on a, on a regular railroad, there isn't a weed to be found. Those are some high potent chemicals that they use on there. So when they go in there to dig the sewer, when they go in there to put these foundations in there, they're going to disrupt this tomb. And that stuff there, if you ever been in construction, it's going to be a dust bowl. Now, all of that stuff is going to be out for us to breathe. And it, 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 there's so many families that are, to be honest, what I wish that that piece of property would, would become is a bike path. Take where the rails, the railroad used to be.
Hey, one second. We're going to go through a lot tonight, so please, no clapping or cheering. I know it's, it's always one more rule, it seems like. Go ahead, we'll, we'll give you a little extra time.
But, you know, that piece of property back there, I see deer out there. I feed the birds. There's yellow canaries back there. There's red-headed canaries back there. It's, it's just nature right there, right now. And you want to change something into something semi-beautiful into something that's just going to be bottleneck and just, it's going to be massive. Most people have two, three cars. And then you're going to put two, three cars for each family there? Where are they going to park? Right now, Game Farm Road is just overrun with people coming there during the day that work in those different areas. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
My name is Jim Liel.
Unmute the mic. Oh, there.
Uh, my name is Jim Liel. I live at 3184 Raleighwood. It's right on the, right, right on the, uh, the street right there, that they're planning to, uh, to build these multi-units. I also was going to say that when I look out my property to the fence, it is about this size of this room. The width, I see right over to the neighbors. In fact, it looks right now closer. I've been a, I, I've been at my home for 54 years. Uh, I've worked for the Springfield School District all that time. The other thing is we have a very pleasant neighborhood as it is now. By 54 years, I cannot remember a problem that we've had. You might ask the police, but I can't remember anything. Maybe a couple of kids getting in a squabble or something, but we would definitely lose our privacy and the extreme noise pollution. When they attempt to build this, when they build these things, it takes probably a year or so. And the biggest problem I see, and I mentioned the same thing, the toxin that would be disturbed when they dig up that railroad to put in that stuff. I know that that railroad has just been put, just dirt over that railroad and I know they didn't take any dirt out. And that is really going to be a problem. I suggest if you go through this plan, that, that dirt should all be removed and taken somewhere so they can clean it up or whatever they would do with it. I can, I can also say that living there for that time, those, those tracks, they have never been moved. I, I don't mean the tracks. The tracks have been up, but that, they only covered the dirt. They didn't take any dirt out. That was just, just covered. There's a lot I can say about. Oh, time's up.
Hey, thanks, Jim.
I, I didn't know I could even talk that long.
It goes quicker than what you think. Ronald Smith in Harvest. I, I don't know that I can make out the, is it?
Go ahead, Ronald. I'm Ron Smith. I own 3181 Pheasant Boulevard. My property abuts this property that we're talking about. Michelle, thank you for taking your time to go out there today. One of my concerns is potentially unintended consequences that happen. We all make choices, but we don't always think what's going to happen because of our choices. So I did a little research today. The median-priced home in Lane County as of May of '24 was $510,000. The, I looked at Zillow and my property today was at Zillow at $320,000. So that means my property is at 62%, call it 60% of the median home value. The headline for the Register Guard today was our governor talked about affordable housing. And so subsequently, we live in affordable housing. Subsequently, if you bring in this annexation, Flamingo is the city line right now, which is three blocks to our south. So that means that Gamebird Village is probably on the shortlist to get annexed in. So that means if it gets annexed in, I also looked at a comparable property on Flamingo, same size home, same size lot, taxes were over $600 a year more. That's not helping affordability. So subsequently, also, when you're buying, looking at affordable homes, most of those people need to get government loans. I don't know if you're familiar, HUD requires if you have access to city sewer, you have to hook up. I looked up that. Average price to hook that up is somewhere between $1,300 to $6,500 per home to hook up to city sewer. All of these things are going to be unintended consequences if those, if those properties get annexed in. I understand we're talking about this one property, but what's the downhill downstream effect? We also talked about, uh, I, we're talking about this being annexed in, but we do know that the proposal is 14 duplexes. 14 duplexes with a five-foot setback on the pheasant side. Well, there's power lines there. So if it's five feet from that building to my property line and those lines are in my backyard, how's sub going to get there? Is a question. They're saying they're being addressed, but let's look at reality. So these things are just going to become realistic situations. I mean, um, you know, you're also going to, if we get annexed in, which again, that's what I'm looking down the line. It's an unintended consequence, right? That we're, you know, we'll have to start paying for things that we didn't vote for. As far as, you know, assessments and bonds and those kinds of things, so. And I'm also curious how 14 duplexes on one lot is low-density residential. Is that like me putting nine tiny homes in my backyard? Because they'd fit. So, curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Harvest.
Hello, uh, my name is Harvest Ido. I live at 3325 Pheasant Avenue. It's the corner lot right on that strip there that would be removed. I've never done anything like this before, but I took my time away from work where I would be right now to make a personal plea to all of you, which is that myself included and everybody here is going to be impacted by this approval. Whether it's, whatever kind of development it is, right? We're not here to talk about specific developments. We're here to talk about the annexation. No matter what, the, no matter what that approval or development will look like, as long as we're approving it, all of us are going to be affected. And if it wasn't in a substantial negative way, I don't think anybody here would take the time out of their days to be here, myself included. And I would like to thank, Michelle, thank you. And I would encourage and implore all of you to come and visit this lot and see exactly how tiny it is. It is miniscule, literally like, a, a road requires a foundation that extends beyond just the road itself. Any true standard road that we see around here would not fit alone in this lot. That is how tiny it is. Railroads require tinier foundations. It, it is, anyways, we're not here to talk about the specific annexation of it. The annexation of this is going to be for a private person. This is not for a public service. I'm not here because I'm like a not-in-my-backyard person. If this was going to be turned into a bike trail or a park, I would be all for it. But this is for a person and that person could build their house anywhere and it should not be built here. This is not a lot that should be construction for private residential homes. Literally even like a single home would be the weirdest shaped house in the world. Who wants to live in a 10-foot wide house that's like a mile long? That's crazy, right? Nobody would want that. This should not be approved for any kind of private construction. That is ridiculous. And I would also encourage you to think if you were one of the people who live in a house like mine that is going to be affected so drastically by this, how would you feel? Would you be coming here to make the same plea to you to not approve this development right now? I imagine that you would be. And I can't see any approval or anybody who would want to approve this development. That's why there's like so many people here right now. This is not an, I'm sure you're all aware, normally these meetings are very boring, right? They're not like this. The reason that there's so many people here is because this is crazy and it should not be approved. All right. I implore you, from one person to another, this doesn't make sense. And that's all I have to say with my time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two folks that I have are Aleah and Bee.
Hi, I'm Aleah Abada. I'm at 3120 Oriole Street. I know we're here to talk about the annexation, but the annexation is obviously going to lead to future development. The proposed development will sit between two urban growth boundary neighborhoods. The size being discussed, we've seen plans and proposals from 2023. It's rather large. Neither neighborhood on either side of this development is supported by Springfield Resources, the code enforcement, traffic, parking, animal services, police response and so on. We are generally supported by Lane County resources. Creating a patchwork of city and county-supported residences has proven in other areas such as Santa Clara and Eugene to not work successfully and causes consternation and concern among both residences. The proposed density of this development, up to about almost 30 units and two-story units, is problematic to situate between two single-story family-style neighborhoods. The neighborhood is, will abut the proposed Gateway Riverbend climate-friendly area. It's one of the proposed things that I think is being discussed for Springfield. It will be right next to it, where the developments would be a better fit there for enhanced walkability and pedestrian-friendly changes that are being proposed. The proposed street for this development that's being discussed is a one-way street. It is going to go in on Game Farm, out on Pheasant. Pheasant is a county road and it has no sidewalks, no streetlights. Kids, families, pets, it, we're all on the street when we're walking on Pheasant. And we're going to add upwards of possibly 50 additional cars in any given day because all of these developments are being discussed as having a driveway and a garage. So that's what we're adding to an urban growth boundary neighborhood. The proposed exit as well at 333 Pheasant is a blind corner. It's the conflux of Oriole and Pheasant. It's completely blind. Just walking there now, you cannot see around the corner. And that's where these cars are proposed to exit the, the proposed development. That's just unsafe. If reconsidering the annexation is not possible, which would be my primary request, would be my secondary request would be to restrict the development to single-story, single-family residences. That will limit the number of people. If it has to be developed, it will limit the number of cars and it will limit the number of traffic. Gamebird and Raleighwood both have a lot of people who live and work right in, at Riverbend. My recommendation, if it's possible, is to consider making this a green space right next to what is already going to be considered a climate-friendly area at Riverbend, rather than turning it into a development and having everything shoved into a very narrow lot.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Bee James and I'm, I live at 3325 Pheasant Boulevard. I'm a new homeowner and my, my home is located at the house that is 3333 Pheasant Boulevard that's planned for demolition. So then I would become the new corner home with a lot of through-traffic right next to my home, which I didn't buy that house planning on that. So when I bought my home, I thought I was joining a quiet little neighborhood. The area between the annex consists of 42 homes that created this neighborhood since 1952. Currently, this area is quiet, peaceful and relatively safe. I would like to express my concern and distress over the possibility of multi-unit homes being squeezed in between Pheasant Boulevard and Raleighwood. This is a very small area and overhousing would not only create a lot of traffic and parking issues, but also foster traffic accidents, lack of current privacy and quiet, and a possible fire hazard. Additionally, the 42 homes in this area would lose all privacy and be subject to a year of extreme noise pollution, construction infringement, and from what I've heard from others, possible toxic pollution. The Gateway Refinement Plan, which is, was prepared in 1992 by the Development and Public Works Department, City of Springfield, is a 65-page proposal regarding development in Springfield. And with this, within this working document, there are a few things that I would like to highlight. Number one, maintain the livability and quality of existing residential neighborhoods as new development occurs. While new housing does provide opportunity for those seeking homes, it should not be at the expense of the existing neighborhood. This project will completely change the existing safety and privacy of our neighborhood. Number two, ensure efficient and safety transportation systems in and around residential areas. Promote walking and bicycling as alternative modes of travel and by providing pathways. There is no room for sidewalks in this development, let alone promoting walking and bicycling on narrow, narrow, overpopulated streets as that would be dangerous for walkers and bicyclists. Number three, preserve historic landmark in developed areas. This annex seeking to be developed is listed as part of the Historic Resources Survey listing under the abandoned Southern Pacific Railroad spur corridor C191890. It's a component of a historic landmark and could be turned into a beautiful walkway garden or park highlighting its history. Number four, mitigate adverse impacts of public facilities on residential areas. This includes digging deep for sewer lines that are planned to be brought over from Game Farm Road. And as you've heard, our neighborhood has a lot of concerns about disrupting that soil. I'm requesting a no on the annexation. That is my number one priority in coming here today is to say that I support and stand with my neighborhood behind me and I would like to keep this area quiet, private, beautiful, public, family, air, type of a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two people I have are Bill and Camelia. Camilla?
My father's with me. Is it okay if he talks as well? Or is there more people?
Did, oh, sorry. Did, uh, did he submit a card?
It was for us both, basically. It says my name, though.
So let's do, let's do this. Let's let Bill go.
Okay.
And then we'll sort this out.
All right.
Hello, I'm Bill Kurnerth, Springfield resident and owner of 3340 Raleighwood Avenue. First, I want to thank the council to give us the opportunity to provide public input. And I also want to thank Tom Severs for promptly returning my call last week and. and patiently answering my questions. I have a feeling I wasn't the only person he talked to. So while I understand the need to prioritize infill in a city as opposed to urban sprawl, I, along with the rest of the neighbors, have legitimate concerns regarding this annexation and proposed development. Frankly, trying to shoehorn a multi-housing development into this small and linear piece of land is like wearing a narrow shoe. No matter how hard you try to make it fit, it's going to hurt. In this case, it's going to hurt a lot of people and it's going to hurt land values. One of the real red flags that we see in this is that access to this development will be limited to one way in and one way out. This seems to present a real danger in an emergency, hindering response time, easy access and maneuverability by emergency vehicles such as 35-foot fire trucks. This easement, which neighbors have mowed and served as caretakers at no cost for many, many years, has acted as a buffer for all these homes. Because of that, many of these homes or these homes have been designed so their backyards face this vacant easement. And now these backyards will become fully exposed to the noise, the traffic, and the light pollution of a busy, compact, multi-housing subdivision. These proposed duplexes in the street will abut right up to the property lines of these adjoining properties, taking away the privacy and relaxed lifestyle that you, me, and every homeowner seeks in their own home and backyard. And if you do tour the neighborhood, and we appreciate the councilperson who'd already looked at the easement, you'll see that these 42 or more homes are not expenses, expensive houses. The value of these homes is in the backyards and the privacy and the relaxing benefits it affords. If this annexation is to go through, it's going to be a real challenge for city planners and the developer to help mitigate the noise, the light, the congestion, the safety, and the traffic issues to accommodate all involved. In my experience, in my career and lifetime, we like to say that a good deal is a win-win. If this annex goes through, the development goes through, it's only a win-win. It's only a win for the developers. It's not a win-win for everybody. So is it worth it? I agree with those who had mentioned before that a bike path would be a much better option. I appreciate your time. I know you're not paid very much or anything. You don't have easy jobs. I know you take these positions because you want to do the right thing and I have faith that you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Could, when you get done with your testimony, could you help your dad put, put in another card? And we'll just put it on the back. All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Camila Garabey. I live in 3240 Raleighwood Avenue. I, we, we live, I don't know. My family of three, four, we live there and I have four beautiful nephews, a beautiful niece. They spend their entire time just playing outside and to see that this is being built in an alley so tiny, this disrupts everything. It disrupts traffic. There's traffic accidents. There, there will be traffic accidents, obviously. Parking issues will happen as well. We will have lack of privacy and it is also a potential fire hazard. This would also make 42 households lose their privacy and property as well. Our neighborhood is very peaceful and safe. We all see each other as family and friends. We are very close with one another and we find this very unfair for us. And if this annex was, annexation was to happen, it would be very unfair and unjust as there's hardly any space and it will, it will also be unfair for the people who will live there. There's barely any space there. I, I agree with everyone who has been talking. And my family and I, we all object to this idea and we're requesting reconsideration due to our safety, our mental health, and privacy as well. Because I know if this was any of you like in the situation, you would love your space back and your privacy as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two people that I have are Pat Condrin and Stephen Bennett. As soon as it goes green. So. It still looks red. You're, you're on.
Stephen Bennett, I live at 317, 317997, Pheasant Boulevard. I'm out of breath. Four things. TPT and R. Privacy. Traffic. Remediation. And toxins. I think that's what you have to deal with here. Everyone else has said what I would have said. And they've all been said many times over, so that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pat Condrin. I live at 3290 Raleighwood. And I just agree with everybody here also. I feel like my backyard is my sanctuary. I've lived there for 30 years and that having a house, but even worse, having a road right behind my fence, really? Come on. You know, there's going to be traffic and light and noise pollution. It's just like sort of heartbreaking to think that that would happen to this neighborhood. I think that the council should be making sure that this doesn't happen and that our neighborhood is enhanced by that property rather than ruined. That's all I have to say because everybody has said it all very nicely already.
Thank you. The next two people that I have are Ron DeBroski and Gabrielle.
I'm Ron DeBroski. I live at 3290 Raleighwood Avenue. I've lived there for over 30 years. In addition, I have a rental property right next to me at 3280, which I've had for 20 years. My current tenants, very quiet tenants, have lived there for 12 years. The annexation, I'm very much opposed to, just for the, one issue that maybe hasn't been mentioned or not very often is that I'm a little concerned that that neighborhood that I live in would be wedged between two annexed properties. And I fear down the road, it might lead to our neighborhood being annexed and requiring us to install or be connected to a city sewer system, which would be a big expense, especially for me having two properties there. And then I echo the concerns that everyone else has expressed as far as the, the noise that would be generated, certainly by the construction, would be pretty horrendous for us. We're semi-retired. We spend a lot of time in our backyard and we just love the quiet. And for development to go in like that has been proposed, we fear it would really degrade our, our lifestyle. We spend a lot of time in our backyard and it wouldn't be the same without development going on. So I'm very much opposed to the annexation because of the development that it would likely lead to. And I find that the, the whole notion of developing a strip like that, a little absurd. It just seems like poor planning if, if you start developing narrow, very narrow strips of land like that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was just waiting for you.
All timer.
All right, my name is Gabriel Guy, the next three mayor, and I live on 3338 Pheasant Boulevard, which is the house right across where the proposed exit of the annexation would be. Our concern is that our family purchased the home there because it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. There's not a lot of through, through traffic and we have plenty of privacy there. With this annexation, our concern is, since it is a one-way, everyone's going to be exiting right in front of our home, right in front of our yard, and we're going to have to deal with all that noise. I'm sure everyone in this neighborhood likes the quietness that, and from what I've heard, purchases their homes because of those privacies. And I feel like that's something that is, should be protected. And that's, most of my concerns have also already been said, so I don't have much to say as well.
Thank you. The next two folks that I have are Larry Brabham and Mike Fairchild.
My name is Mike Fairchild. I live at 3324 Raleighwood. I've been there since 1982. I am the mower. I have taken the responsibility that SciCam B would not do and pretty much the folks that bought it won't do is try to maintain that tall grass and keep the fire hazard down next to the wooden fences. I, I have participated in cleaning up that area because no one else would do it. People were throwing their trash over the fence. I put it in my trailer and I take it to the dump. I don't go complain. I just do it. I didn't know who to complain to because they wouldn't answer. We tried to have a deal with SciCam B to buy it for a community garden. We met several times and we were, every time we thought we had a price, the price went up. So we finally just squashed the deal. I'm really concerned about the lot lines being, if they've been actually marked. I found the two when I built my fence, but it looks like there's buildings on property. I don't know what the, if the new owners would try to make them take all those buildings out and, and realign their fences, which would be a horrendous cost for them. Sound, I have four cats that we, we put into service to evade the rats that were, the county allowed people to have chickens in their backyard. Not Ron, he was responsible, but the guy next to me had 15 chickens and a turkey. And the whole neighborhood was infested and we had to buy cats. We got them from a rescue center and they have done the job. They're kind of lonesome, so I guess when the construction starts, if it does, we'll have more work for the cats. The other thing is, I'm almost running out of time. There is, there is hardware that I know it because I've ran into it with my lawnmower. Galvanized steel pipe, two inch, it comes through the fence and goes down in the ground. I don't know where it goes. I don't know what it comes from. So that needs to be investigated by whoever. And I just want you guys to remind you that when Ethan Court went in, you asked us if we wanted to be annexed into the city. And I think you got a pretty resounding heck no. And I think that still goes today. I am really definitely against this, against this. Our privacy, safety of our animals, they go over the fence and forage and sleep in the tall grass until I mow it, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Brabham and I live at 3316 Raleighwood, right, right next to Mike. And I'm a local Springfield business owner here, as well as a longtime resident of this neighborhood. Actually, my parents built this house when I was two years old, so I've been, I've lived at this place a better part of 62 years. And I think the only time that I was actually away from this place was when I was away for college. Really love the neighborhood. I bought it from my parents and we've been there now for 30 years, my wife and I. And, and as Mike said, you know, and most people in the room have said, you know, we're very opposed to this construction and, you know, I, I had a great long conversation with Tom Severs here last week. He was very delightful, very helpful, gave us a lot of good information. But the, the thing that I heard come out of his mouth that I think that was probably the most alarming was the fact that these houses are going to end up being placed on our side of this right-of-way is what I'm to understand because the road needed to go on the other side because of the transmission lines and, and the width of those trans, the, the right-of-way for those transmission lines precluded putting houses on that side. So, and so then he tells me that, you know, it could be a duplex and it could be as high as 35 feet tall. And I said, good lord, are you kidding me? I'm going to be sitting in my backyard looking at this skyscraper 10 feet away from my fence line. The things that I would like for you to consider is, you know, Tom obviously did a very good job kind of checking all the boxes for what the criteria is for the city annexation process. But there are some things that I'm a little concerned about that are more logistics than checking a box. For example, we've been talking all, all night long here about the fact that this is a one-way road. If Springfield Utility Board has to service those transmission lines, where are they going to put their truck? If an ambulance needs to pass through there? There's, there's no place for it to go. And so I, I feel that that's, that's a huge issue, you know, aside from, aside from all the rest of them that you've heard tonight. Traffic flow, has there been any, has there been any traffic flow considerations for this space? Because as you've heard other people testify tonight, is that all this traffic is passing in one direction and dumping out into a rather quiet neighborhood in a non-artorial street? How is that getting addressed? Of course, for all of us, you know, especially with, you know, a space up to 35 feet tall, we're all concerned about privacy. You know, how, how, how is the privacy of these people that have existing houses going to be dealt with? The only other thing that I have is, you know, you know, I, I know that the purpose of this public hearing is all about annexation. But, you know, if, if this thing goes through, then, you know, it, it would be nice that there's some sort of public input for what happens with this development and how this development gets constructed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two people I have are Keith and Janice White. Okay. Then Tracy Baker.
Hi, I'm Janice White. I live at 3235 Pheasant Boulevard. When I bought the house, it was Eugene. It was 726 Pheasant Boulevard Eugene. It was 48 years ago, 49. And so I've raised my kids there and my grandkids are going to inherit it. And I'm just, the, the houses that they're going to build are going to be overlooking my backyard, which I really made into a nice place. It's very quiet. And also about the septic, all of us have septic tanks and I rarely see a pump or going down our street. So it has good soil right now. So it's always been like that for me. I think I've had them out four times in the last 48 years. So that concerns me and I did measure the property from my spence to the Raleighwood and it was 60 feet. So I really don't know how they're going to put all that in 60 feet with the streets and the parking and apartments or whatever they're going to build. So I think I said what I need to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Baker. I live at 3260 Raleighwood Avenue. Prior to moving into that house, I've been a lifelong Springfield resident. I've always been proud of the city of Springfield and its development, its parks. It's a beautiful community. I've been in this current house for 27 years. If you drive down Raleighwood and you look at our homes, a lot of them have a mid-century modern design, which means as you go by the front of our homes, they don't look like much, but on the backside of our homes is where we have like floor-to-ceiling windows and we're wide open. So if you're putting a two-story house, what I understand is five feet off of my fence line. Right on my fence line are the power lines. And so every time I get a decent sized tree going, sub comes through and cuts it off. So I'm very limited in how much privacy I can try to develop to have, to prevent a two-story house from like looking into my window. So we are limited by those power lines. Being county residents, we also have seven-foot fence lines back there. So if that's annexed into this, into the city of Springfield, my understanding is that the, the height requirements are lower. So how will that impact us if you do decide to annex this property? My other concern is noise. I feel like we've been accommodating. We've got lifelight coming over us. Um, my other concern is noise. I feel like we've been accommodating. We've got lifelight coming over us. Um, City of Eugene put in some noise abatement across I five. Um, all that gets pushed to us. And so in the last twenty-seven years, the amount of, I don't know what you would call it, like ambient noise. I mean, you can constantly hear the road noise. And so now we're going to have another road in my backyard. So if you approve it, I would like to see some kind of sound barriers put along our property. Um, the other thing that I'm concerned about as far as annexation is that road would be Springfield School District. Our side is four J, the other side is four J. So in neighborhoods with no sidewalks and lots of little kids and we've got multiple school systems bussing through there, that's a safety concern. Um, also, when you look at public transportation, I noticed in the application, it said that the access was Gateway, which the only access to LTD is either to go across to the hospital to get on the main line there or to get to Gateway. The only way you can get through Gateway is to go through a small walkway that spits you out into the parking lot of the Holiday Inn. And so I don't know if the Holiday Inn has approved of their property being the right of way for this neighborhood to access public transportation. There's also no green space. So if you have families living there, they have to go through neighborhoods all the way down kind of by cloverleaf in order to get access to a park. They're not, they're not walking distance to anything. We're kind of in a food desert. So to put housing in here um, for, you know, if it's for families, it just, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem reasonable. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two uh, that I have is uh, Lommy, Conrad, and then Ken.
Okay, do I press this to start? Okay. Um, hi, my name is Lamu. Um, I am standing here before you to express my firm disapproval of this potential proposal. Oh, sorry, three, two, four, one, Pheasant Boulevard. Um, first, I'd like to take a moment to recognize that men's privilege that we all have of spending our time being concerned about this annex. There is a ongoing genocide of Palestinians. Therefore, I live on Pheasant Boulevard where the proposed annex will impact around forty uh, plus homeowners, including myself. Um, this area is currently a peaceful space to foster community connections. I personally have met new ma- uh, new neighbors walking in that area, uh, walking their pets and whatnot. Uh, the proposal of this annex, um, undoubtedly will bring um, several issues. A lot have already been named. To name a few that have already been named, um, would be the traffic. Um, with high traffic, there's obviously going to be increase of potential accidents. And like many of us have said, the roads there are already very small and not protected. And I know that there are disabled children on our street as well. Parking would also be an issue. I know that even local, um, vehicles have to kind of compromise and park on each other's spaces because there already is hardly any uh, parking space. So I'm not sure what that even would look like if there were more people. Um, and having uh, first responders uh, potentially have not, not be able to access um, our homes would be a serious concern. And then as well with, with the potential development, um, the construction would affect all of us with uh, air pollution, um, early morning noise for at least a year. I mean, I'm not real familiar with how long things uh, take, but um, it would be much longer than any, any of us would want. And I also have a concern about the potential of um, the local wildlife being displaced and undoubtedly coming to our homes to uh, seek shelter and safety, which would impact our physical, emotional and financial health as far as having to um, try and deal with that. Um, and I already know that there's several of us on Pheasant who already struggle with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lamu.
Also for Palestine.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Ken Malden. I'm at three, two, four, one, Pheasant Boulevard. I'm moderately new to the area. Uh, I've only been here about eight or nine years. Uh, but I know our houses were built in the fifties. And with houses built in the fifties, they of course did not think about a lot of things we think about today. So most of our houses were built with a single wide, car-wide driveway. So they talk about, you know, people parking on the road. It's because it wasn't thought about back in the fifties when our houses were built. And I think to price it to increase ours to a double size, you know, to fit two cars side by side, it's probably, you know, three to five thousand dollars, and that's only if you do it cheaply. Our street, uh, Pheasant Boulevard is kind of a thoroughfare for walkers. Uh, as was mentioned, the Holiday Inn has a, an little exit and entrance onto our street. So there's a lot of people that are out walking constantly throughout the day. People that are getting to jobs, people that are getting out just to walk their dogs, et cetera. And we do have a special needs kid that just moved into our neighborhood that um, randomly gets out and he runs and he, he runs over, typically rings our doorbell and then they catch him and they walk him back. But that's a big concern when we start having more and more traffic coming down our street. You know, they do everything they can to help with alarms, et cetera, on the doors, but you know, I'd say he's probably around ten, twelve years old and he, he doesn't understand. He's probably got the mental capacity of somebody that's probably three or four years old. And so he's not going to understand, oh, there's a car coming, I should stop. You know, as other people have mentioned, I know we're here for the annexation, but the ultimate goal for them is to develop back there. It's nice that I can look out my windows and I can see the mountains. But if they build, you know, something up to thirty-five feet tall, that's all I'm going to see. You know, there's no green, there's no ability to see the, the mountains, et cetera, all the stuff that I think we take for granted here in the state of Oregon anyway. You know, the increase in noise pollution, I remember, I know I'm almost out of time, but I remember as a kid being able to look up and see millions of stars or what seemed like millions of stars. And with the light pollution we have, you're lucky to see ten stars a night. And increasing streetlights, et cetera, in our little area is going to make that nearly impossible anymore.
Thank you. I have Louis next and then uh, Camilla, if your dad wants to come now, okay. Is Louis still here? Okay. When you're done, um, you're going to have to fill out a card and give it to Neil when, when you're complete.
Nobody with me? All is together in this. Yeah. Hey, my name is uh, Cornelio. I live in uh, thirty, thirty-two, four, Raleighwood Avenue. Uh, the next month will be like twenty years in there and then um, this area in where I live is a, is a like little eye on the back, but you know, all these people, they clean it up every day. That is a beautiful, beautiful place to live, to live in there because they, they uh, clean it up. Mike, he, he do that good job. And then everybody, everybody work together in this aisle. It's not avenue, it's aisle. You know, and then um, I don't like the, the scene in my backyard, like one apartment or house, whatever, like fifty, fifty feet high. Because the, we need a privacy to live in, in this area. It's a beautiful area. And then if they put in something like other houses, that, or houses, it's a, it's down the prices, everything, you know? This is my concern. I, I don't, I don't, I'm not agree about it, uh, that somebody build uh, anymore right there. And then yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Neil, before we go to the applicant, do you have anybody online wanting to testify?
Yes, we have two hands online.
Okay, could you bring them up, please?
Okay, we've had a little technical difficulties, but we're going to try this. Uh, Sebastian Cardenas Romayo, should be the unmute your mic.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes?
Go ahead and say something, Sebastian.
Hello, can you hear me? Testing, testing. Anybody hear me?
Well, Sebastian, we're working on it right now. Give us one second.
Okay, awesome. No problem. Let me know.
Sebastian, can you try one more time?
Yeah, can you hear me? Is it picking up my voice now? Uh, one more test.
Sebastian, you're still coming in really soft. They're working on it right now. So just give us one more second. They're still working on it, Sebastian. We will be right with you.
Okay, no problem.
More time?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll just start off. My name is Sebastian.
Sebastian, we're losing you. We're breaking up here. Give us one more second. Okay, go ahead, try it. See your name and address for the record. Sebastian, are you still with us?
Sebastian, did we lose you?
Yeah, he just dropped.
Okay.
Will we bring up the next person and see if we can get going through and then we'll come back to Sebastian?
The next speaker is Dominique Richardson and Dominique, try to unmute your microphone for us.
Hello, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fantastic. My name is Dominique Richardson. I live at thirty-two seventy-nine Pheasant Boulevard. Um, I want to first and foremost thank my neighbors for bringing their concerns this evening. And I would like to say as well that I agree um, with my neighbors in the opposing of the request for annexation of the property. I echo their concerns regarding the environmental factors involved, including the size of the lots and proposal of two-story buildings over single-family homes and the loss of privacy that will result, as well as the effects of noise pollution from the proposed construction. As someone who works from home, my concerns, of course, are for my employment at this time. I do work a job where I am required to be on the phones all day. And therefore I do fear with the noise pollution created by the construction of what that would mean for my employment. Concerns regarding public safety also come to mind with the increased traffic, possible hindering of emergency vehicles and concerns for evacuation routes if needs arise. Additionally, concerns brought forward this evening regarding possible toxins remaining from the railway lines. I would like to respectfully request an environmental impact report. I would like to be informed of the possible effects of this development on traffic, storm water management, air quality, noise pollution, and what disturbing this land may mean for the health and safety of our residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we're going to go back to Sebastian.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, Sebastian.
Awesome. So first off, um, my name is Sebastian Gardeinas Trimallo. Our house is three, 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 eight, Pheasant Boulevard. My brother spoke here a few minutes ago, um, but uh, I want to let you guys know that this is our first house and we plan to stay here for a long time. So on to the matter, we want to oppose the uh, the annexation as well as the development of this proposal. Some of our concerns include the tracks. Um, first off, there's the environmental concerns, which many of our neighbors have already mentioned. Second, I'd like to also mention history of the tracks is also something that may or may not be preserving. I personally found it pretty neat hearing about um, the train station that was there when we first moved in here because I hadn't heard of it elsewhere. Another thing that I'd like to mention is the um, the annexation area is supposed to be contiguous, but for uh, the proposed one-way road, it would not actually be contiguous. Um, so any fire truck going through the fire, through the one-way street would have to start at Game Farm Road and then end at Pheasant Boulevard. Essentially, um, going in and out of the si- Springfield city, that's uh, multiple times. So as far as I know, this fails to meet the criterion of the contiguousness of the zone. Yeah, that, a lot of other concerns that have been mentioned have uh, are part of my, on my this too. But uh, I'll just keep it brief today and then uh, let you guys go on.
Thank you. Neil, was that our last online hand?
Yes.
Okay, um, I have one more card from the applicant.
Mayor, just a procedural note, the applicant is not subject to the same three-minute limit.
Thank you for reminding us.
He's going to be talking now. I don't know if I can hear him or not.
Hello, my name's John Schmidt. I'm a landscape architect and principal with the Satchery Group. I'm here representing the applicant tonight. And Dan Howerson is with me over to the right. He's the senior planner on the property that prepared the annexation application we submitted to the city. Uh, I want to thank the mayor and counselors for the opportunity and staff and Tom had the opportunity to speak. How much time do I have?
You're not limited by time.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I wanted to thank all the residents because I realize this is a pretty tough situation to be in to present an annexation where everyone knows it's going to have impact, it's going to have development. Can't deny that. I live in Berber Road in an annexed area of the city and we- I live in Berber Road in an annexed area of the city and we have development happening around me. And so I see that, so I I don't think I can say anything tonight that um would change that fact, you know, that if we went through annexation, the goal ultimately would see if we could develop the property. But I I at least wanted to share some information about what we're thinking of doing for the property and we really haven't developed anything yet. But it started with my client asking us when it was for auction, how do you feel about me purchasing the property? And I think we said the word challenge about five times. I mean, it's a challenge for building a unit, designing a unit, allowing access, allowing fire, allowing utilities, all those issues. It's two-point-four acres, which is a nice-sized property, but it's sixty feet wide. So we can't deny that. So there's some challenges to it. So we've been looking at the property and the first person we spoke to was Sub because Sub has that high um voltage transmission lines to the south. So we started to see all these issues we chair with our science, our client, and he decided to purchase the property after auction from SciCamB. Um, and so we started to look at it more and we said, well, let's go through the annexation process and then hear from residents and see and see what our next steps would be. Um, so a couple of things that we've know we are considering doing if if our client wants to move forward is that he wants to do, cuz we know we're in a neighborhood, clearly, we can't deny that, single-family neighborhood, we want to do residential units. We want to have them be a homeowner owner occupied units on their own lots, so they wouldn't be apartments, they would not be condos. And they would be attached units, more than likely, we'd have to do that for co, but they'd be on individual lots, so the units would have a party wall where maybe be between garages and units. So that's his goal. Our client we work with for years, when he does units of this type, he sets them up for homeownership, so the lots can be sold. Um, so we definitely want to do that. There's no way these would be over two-story. There's no way we could conceivably do it. After speaking with Sub, because of all the neighbors to our north on Raleigh have their service lines along there, we have to allow access to those. We'd have to do a step second-floor unit, which would basically be a partial second-floor unit. That'd have to be stepped back from power and every single pole we'd have to have clear access to where they could get their trucks into. So Sub has put a lot of restrictions on us for this property um that we would have to address. We haven't figured it all out, but we know we'd have to address that. Public Works has said um you'd have to improve water, we'd have to do public water for the project, we'd have public store. They said that they would provide, we can provide public store, we think it could make it work. There was even discussion on making provisions for residents to the north, not as a requirement, this is me translating from Public Works. If at any time in the future, for some reason, it would be there. So they were putting those provisions on our client. That's just informal discussion. We don't have any design, but we're trying to understand this to say, is this challenge surmountable as part of a buildable project? We know that there's a density that could be allowed for this, but we know there's no way we'd even approach this. We're probably in in the low twenties for units that would be attached. It just doesn't make any sense at all. It's not practical. It's really not feasible to to go higher density here. Fire is already told us in earlier discussion, we have to have this wide enough for fire trucks, minimum of twenty feet. We're looking at twenty-one to twenty-two feet of a private road. They'll have access from both ends. They won't be restricted. We'll probably have to restrict the vehicles. We wish we wouldn't have to, but Lane County is potentially restricting us on how we enter or exit the property. And we'd have to get all those approvals, which we do not have in place now to do that. So that's another challenge that we have. Um, we can see because of the fact that you enter and exit, you know, however we design that, vehicles, they just have to be in there for this community. We can't expect them to park in the other neighborhoods and we don't want that, so we're trying to create more parking than what you would maybe normally have cuz we wouldn't have on-street parking. We wouldn't have enough room in our community for this little community. So we'd have parking with garages or spaces between the units for parking. So we're trying to make sure we have a higher amount, so we don't try to minimize that burden to those neighborhoods in north and south. Um, stormwater, we have to address that cuz that's a state mandate for Springfield and Eugene. So we have to treat all the impervious services. We want to do that with vegetated stormwater facilities. They'd be in planters. So they'd be in tight planters, probably. We've talked to Sub, we put them along the south side as much as we could um and have them be vegetated. Um, so we have, that's another challenge we have to address. Um, and that just the design of the units, we've only been in discussion with what they could potentially be. But again, they would only be two-story and the backs would have to have these pretty amazing setbacks to make sure we're clear of electric. So it wouldn't be large units. These would be, I would guess, in the thousand-square-foot ranges, but we try to have all these with a garage, at least one or two-car garage if we could to allow for more spacing um for those vehicles on site. So we're trying to address those challenges, but I know listening to all the residents behind me, I I count at least twenty-five. Um, and it's true, I think the biggest challenge we found after talking to our client is can we create something that is residential, single-family residential that has some similarity to these neighborhoods that are in the north and south of us? And that's something that if we move forward, that's what we'd have to look at in detail. And I think if we did move forward, it'd be to our benefit to share it with these neighborhoods. Um, and Dan and I have been talking about this before the meeting. I don't know if there's a requirement for a neighborhood meeting, but I think it'd be beneficial for us to do that, to share this with the residents. So if we move forward, they can see more, we can answer more questions and just try to vet this as much as we can through the process. So by the nature of trying to do these homes to be smaller, single-family attached on their own lots, immediately these would be small lots and we'll be using the middle housing policies that have been enacted in Eugene, Springfield, Albany, and a lot of the cities. We're trying to create something that has a lower buildability cost that lowers its price point, so it could provide that single-family homeownership and try to not get a unit that's radically different in scale and form. So if even if you had two units attached, it has that single-family residential look to it from the outside, not trying to create large units here. Um, so definitely lower range in the density. And I think we'll just listen and be here for the next and listen to the neighbors and listen to our client and see, see how we want to proceed in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that all your uh testimony?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, come back up, Tom. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and um just acknowledge that we've probably been going close to an hour and a half, and I want to thank folks for coming out and giving a significant amount of testimony. What we're gonna do next is we're gonna turn it over to the council so that they can give Tom any additional feedback um or questions that he can bring back for the next step.
Mayor, one procedural point, can you also clarify that you're closing the record as well?
And I am closing the record as well. Anybody have questions? Joe?
Just some of the, you know, if we could address some of the questions that the folks, the residents brought up. I'm concerned about the toxicity potential. I didn't see that in the reports, whether they did a toxicology or I don't know, it's called a toxicology. I was used to that with people.
Yeah.
And and that, and yes, and then then the um, the, I think there were in some of those plans I've seen years ago, what they call it the sun plane? The sun vision plane where it's where they're, you know, it's basically the site plane, but they call it the sun plane.
Um, solar access.
That's it. Yes, sir. So if we can make sure that that's delineated in that, I would appreciate that information as well.
Sure, sure. Um, yeah, so in response in full to all of the testimony, we will be updating the staff report and that will be provided to all the counselors um leading up to the second reading on June seventeenth. Um, as far as solar access, I think that may have been removed from the code. I could be wrong on that, but in the last code update, that may have been a component that was taken out. Uh, I will look into that though and address it if it is applicable.
I'd appreciate it. I I wouldn't be surprised. I've been here too long, but um, that's that'd be great if you can answer all the questions.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, I will be spending the next two weeks poring through the recording and answering testimony. Um, as far as any possible toxicity, uh, I will provide the blanket statement that it is incumbent upon the uh property owner to uh provide the burden of proof as to any reports or studies or anything that would be needed to make sure that the site is developed in a safe manner. Um, I can only speculate as to what has been sprayed out there in the past. I know glyphosate is a very strong weed killer. It's been used for decades. Um, just on a cursory review during the testimony, it has a half-life of two-hundred-and-forty-nine days, so there is potential that it is no longer active, especially in an aerobic environment if it is in fact buried or covered with soil at this point in time. But that would be for the property owner to uh investigate.
Right, and I think maybe not overstepping my bounds here, but I think too that based on the age of the railroad that they maybe have been using byproducts or using DDT. So that would be something.
Good possibility. Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, so I did a little bit of research on what I could find from the railroad. It was owned by Southern Pacific Transportation Company uh operated in the area from eighteen-sixty-five until around nineteen-ninety-six. Um, the regional land information database, R-LID, contained only one deed and bill of sale from SciCam to the current property owner. Uh, Southern Pacific was listed and that date was nineteen-eighty-eight, so I'm not exactly sure when that property was vacated from the railroad, but it has been some forty or semi-years uh at at this point. Um, let's see, the max density for duplexes in the R-one zone, there is none. And so this property could be developed with many more if and possibly i-if it were to fit in all of the other development parameters, setbacks, area for roadway, stuff like that. Um, so as I hear the uh applicant provide further information on what they're looking at, it seems like it would be well below um, you know, any kind of what we would call high density. Um, and their route through the middle housing um is certainly something that we've been looking at. Uh, it is new more or less to the area, so as we get these kind of infill projects, um, you know, unfortunately, this is not a uh public land in the open space zoned piece of property. It is zoned R-one, which is to be bought and sold and developed as residential property in the city. Being in the urban growth boundary, it is expected to develop. So, you know, we're getting to a point, as I see in this city, with fewer and fewer vacant pieces of property, less greenland to be developed. And as there are other potential better pieces of property, the current owner owns this property. McCoy.
Thank you. Um, I just, at first, I want to just express appreciation for everyone who took time out of their Monday nights. Somebody, I think, said that otherwise these meetings are very boring. Um, uh, and it was, I I really appreciate you all taking time and coming and being so thoughtful and respectful and sharing your concerns and and um, you know, expressing the the solidarity that you have with the neighborhood. And I really also want to thank Tom and the team because I I think that this is just the first of many of the the growing pains that we are gonna all have to work through together with the changes in the code and the the need for more middle housing and just the 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 reality of the topography of Springfield in terms of where we can and can't build and what has changed. Um, and so we're, it's gonna be, I mean, we're we're gonna feel it as we all try to work through this and think of it um with, you know, the 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 highest and best use and and how the livability of our community and how do we make room for everyone? So I think I just really wanted to just say that out loud and express my appreciation that you are all in this and are are sharing things so well. And Tom and the team, thank you for taking those phone calls and and the work that you're gonna do upcoming to answer all these questions for us because I think we are all keeping track of it and wanting to also have those questions answered. So thank you.
Victoria.
Thank you, and thanks for everyone for coming. I, these are always the most difficult uh decisions for me because I live on a dead-end street with a hammerhead. Um, and I'm surrounded by county and my backyard is small, but it is wonderful because I look at trees, but that is two and a half, three acres of county land. And there is a reserve strip at the end of my street, which is put there with the intent that it is gonna get punched through at some point to Jasper Road. And when we moved in around the corner on Rocky Road, there was this beautiful, cool, like um grassy area that we all walked our dogs next to the railroad tracks and they came in and put um, and when I first saw it, I was like, how are they gonna fit forty houses into that spot? And they did. Um, it's a cute little neighborhood now, but I just, it's not what it was when I moved in, so I I I totally can relate to what you guys are talking about. Um, but again, this is something where it it is a private piece of property and my vote has to be based on the criteria and how the criteria is met. And then when we start looking at the development, that's where we have to start. A lot of these things that were brought up, which are genuine concerns. I mean, genuine, and that they have to be looked at then. Um, and so I just wanted to to voice that out out loud that I I get it cuz I'm in the same situation. We've, me and my husband have both said, if they start building, we're moot, we're out of here. Um, because we love our backyard so much, so I do, I do understand, but I also know that that's, the potential is always there, so.
Steve.
I've seen a lot of old revved right-ofways turned into bike routes. And I'm wondering if there's some federal money out there, some place that's available to purchase this. Uh, it's a it's a long shot, but it's be, it's done and it's an idea, so. Let's see what happens.
All right. Um, I live out this the same direction, so I go, I go by the spot uh very rarely regularly and I am frankly, I've got some questions about, you know, transportation access that are cuz it is a very odd angle that that entire road's at, so more information about transportation access would be helpful. I would also like to hear more from the fire department. Um, because even though we can access, you know, if you put a road in, you're gonna be able to access it, but the width issue, I think, is kind of a real issue in related to how wide the overall property is because it is very, very narrow back there. And I want to just echo the toxin question, and I know your comment was that, you know, it's on the applicant to bring more information. But at what point is that sort of a a requirement? And I am okay if you come back and say that is a development plan conversation, not necessarily a annexation conversation. But I think that the physical infrastructure piece of accessing the site, um, I'd like to, I'd like to know a lot more information about. Absolutely, yes. Does anybody else have? Okay. Um, we're you had the date when you were bringing this back? June seventeenth is the secondary. So there is no action tonight. Um, I did hear one comment about just annexation in general and you know, I've always, I've always lived in the city next to where the county line is, and I know this is a big, you know, question for our county neighborhoods. It is, we are not forcing anybody to annex, and that has never, that has been the standing policy of the city of Springfield for a long time. Um, with that, um, Tom will have more information. Tom will put the packet out when it becomes available. You're more than welcome to come as we deliberate and work our way through the information. Or you can watch it um online as it as it's streamed. We do have two other items tonight. So before we go to the next item, I'm gonna give everybody a couple of minutes. Um, you're more than welcome to stay, but it is getting close to nine o'clock. I promise it will be as exciting. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Okay, let's just pause the recording for that break. And again, we appreciate the patience while we work through those two technical difficulties. Um, item, your last public hearing is public hearing number four. An ordinance vacating a sixty-five watt foot wide by two-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-six-one feet long right-of-way known as Ivy Street for the purpose of future street realignment. Then this is a first reading and Jenny Shear is here for this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counselors. Um, I'm here for the first reading as as mentioned on the vacation of what is called Ivy Street. Um, Ivy Street is a uh east-west uh uh piece of land about sixty feet wide and uh and two-hundred-and-sixty-six feet uh long. It's located on
It's located and I do, yeah, go to the next, the next slide, yeah. So it's located at the north end of South Fifty-four Street. Outside the plat of Pinehurst. And if you go to the next slide, please. That was conveyed to the city in nineteen seventy-nine, about the same time that Royal Ridge was being developed. And. Apparently, the collector's street was gonna go through that area, so it was. Conveyed to the city as a publicly dedicated right-ofway for that purpose, for free, for future purpose. Also had a provision that if that, if anything changed or if development caused changes in that, that the deed specifically. Allowed the 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 city council to realign that, and that's really what this is all about. I'm gonna go by, I'm going really quickly on this, so bear with me, there are a few criterias that we did look at. Springfield Development Code five point two zero point one three zero B one, two, and three. So I had a conformed to the transportation plan, it does, it's not in it, so that was, that was easy. It also has to. Not conform, but not conflict with the nineteen ninety-seven municipal code, which I did look at. And it looks exactly almost verbatim as the city's development code, so. It conforms or it didn't conflict, I didn't see any conflicts there. And then the last criteria is no negative effects on access, well, it's not, it's vacant. It has never been developed, there's no street on it, it's actually gated off, so no one uses it. I I would bet that most people don't even know it's a road. So it's not gonna have an adverse effect, as a matter of fact, the realignment will actually. Create better circulation. And then finally, financial impact, really, there is none for the city. It was dedicated and donated to the city as a public road. We didn't incur any cost, it's not been constructed. And it's gonna actually benefit the city in the sense that. We're exchanging it for additional right-ofway on on Holly and Fine Street for connectivity for those two streets as well. And of course, there's no special assessment because it is city-owned, so we're not going to assess ourselves for. For that, so. That is all I have, I did as quickly as I possibly could, thank you, any questions? Just a quick one, on the trade of the property, so to speak. Is it? Is it similar sized, similar in size and similar in value, because even though the city got it for free, it's an asset and we should be watching out for our assets. And protecting those, so is. The basic assessment or basic footage or whatever methodology you use is. I I I would say, I mean, this is a, just looking at it, at the face of it. It's, it'd be more unfair in my estimation, and the reason why, it's a very, the the deed itself is very limiting. So if I was an appraiser and I'd look at that and I'd say, well, what's it worth, well, it's only worth for, it's only worth a street. So in that sense, as an asset, it's not really. You can only use it for one thing and one thing only, and that's for right-ofway, so. That's exactly what we're doing, we're exchanging it for for right-ofway. And as a matter of fact, not only just realigning it, but we're also adding two more connection points, so in that, in that sense. It seems. More on our side than it is on on the developer's side.
I like that, thank you. All right, other questions? I'm gonna go go ahead and open the public hearing, I don't have any cards for this item.
No hands for this item, Mayor.
I'm gonna close the public hearing, there's no action tonight, this is first reading only. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
I don't have any cards for business from the audience, are there any hands up?
No hands for this item.
Next item, please.
Next item is. Any business from the city council?
The only business I have is, I believe the packet for the joint hearing, it came out early because it's only about. Eight hundred pages long, so. Just know that you already have it, enjoy your reading. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city manager, item number one is a bid award for project P two, one, one, nine, five. The Forty-Second Street Overlay IP to Markola Project, Amanda Clinton is here for this item.
Hello, Mayor and Council, I'm Amanda Clinton, Senior Contracts Analyst, Community Development, and I'm here to present the bids that we received. Wildish was the lowest bidder, coming in thirty percent lower than the engineer's estimate. So I'm here to gain your approval, to accept Wildish's bid and give them award. And. Award them the project to start construction.
Go ahead, any questions? All right, go ahead, Joe.
I'd like to make a motion to award the subject contract to Wildus Construction Company in the amount of one million, two hundred eighty thousand, thirty-five. Dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Ripper.
Yes.
Counsel Lo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos, and I know there's an entire community that's gonna be excited to get Forty-Second Street repaved. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
No further business, thank you.
Any business from the city attorney?
Uh, no additional business, thanks.
All right, thanks, everybody, we are adjourned.